All rise to the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting of March 13th, 2025. First on the agenda is downtown Maypack Properties for a bond return. Mike?
Is anyone here from?
Yeah, I have no.
This is, yeah, this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public?
I inspected the property on March 7th. All zoning compliance issues have been addressed.
Rich?
So for a public hearing, all comments have been addressed. Applicent did a great job over there.
And Pat had no comments also. There is no one from the audience, correct?
Mr. Chairman, being there's no public comment, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, stay on this project. Keep it nice and clean over there. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks a lot.
We need a referral to the town board.
So the next, the next step is this gets brought to the town board, the town board votes on it, you get your bond back after the town board votes on it. That's how that works.
Do we need, do we need to adopt a?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Yeah, so once they do this next motion, that's what will happen. It gets sent, Rose will send it over to the town board and it'll be approved from there.
I'll make a motion to refer this to the town board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Also for a public hearing, 728 Route 6 LLC for public hearing and a resolution. I don't believe you've had any comments on this. Rich?
All comments have been addressed.
And Pat does have a resolution prepared and to be voted on this evening. Anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this project?
Mr. Chairman, is the, there were no public comments. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We need, also need a motion to adopt the amended site plan.
So all in favor say a?
No, we need a motion.
To close the public hearing first.
Yeah, public hearing, we need, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. I make a motion to move the resolution of the planning board of the Town of Carmel, number 25-13, March 13, 2025, tax map number 76.22-1-54, 728 Route 6, amended final site plan approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next is a public hearing also is Portenza Miller 257 and 267 Daisy Lane. No comments from you, Mike?
They got their variances. Everything was fine. I have no comments.
And Rich?
All comments have been addressed.
No comments from Pat. Anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this? If not, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, being there's no public comment, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pat, clearly he's not here yet, but he, I've spoken to him. He's coming down from Albany. I'll ask him to prepare a resolution. I believe he has it with him tonight. You can follow up with Rose during the week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're good.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Speak to Rose. Rose is not in the office tomorrow, but you can reach her next week.
I'm sorry?
You can speak to Rose. She won't be in the office tomorrow, but you can speak to her next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Next on the agenda, the fourth item is Putnam Plaza, 1844, Route 6 in Carmel.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce myself.
Sure.
Every striping.
Good evening. Mike, I believe you had some comments on this.
Yeah, the applicant proposes to mill the asphalt, replace curbs, modify striping, and add landscaping in the parking lot of Putnam Plaza, provide parking space dimensions of the angled parking. It looked to me like they showed the 20 feet, but it didn't have it because it's, when it's angled like that, it's, you can only go to the front of the, what would that be the, no, it's on an angle, so it didn't look like it fit to me. The variance in parking space size was issued for one area on the map. We need to check that because I don't know if you're fully within that area to do the nine by 18, so that's something we should check on. Will bollards or other devices be installed at the front of Harbor Freight? Divestiture is close to the driving aisle, people backing out of the accessible spaces, and the first space back directly towards the building. You should probably put something there else in this town, somebody will hit it. Why are there no accessible spaces along the entire strip except at Harbor Freight? The accessible space should be spaced throughout the parking lot.
Mike, thank you. Rich?
So referrals to New York State DEC, New York City DEP, Putnam County Planning for GML 239, Town of Carmel Highway Department, ECB, and Carmel Fire Department are required. Permits would be needed from the DEC for stormwater and wetlands, DEP for stormwater permit in the designated main street. Applicant has noted the need for both of those permits, just so you know. ECB and Town of Carmel Highway permit if there's any work on or in Old Route 6. The overall disturbance is 13,300 square feet, which is above the New York State DEC regulations. This, they have provided a stormwater pollution prevention plan. As Mike mentioned, this is like kind of a redevelopment, well, it's considered a redevelopment project under New York State stormwater regulations, so there's a little different. It's not our standard type of review on this, but it's, it's a little easier to do a redevelopment because you've already had disturbed soils. So that's under review. Plantings that they're providing should be verified by the wetlands inspector, installed per town code. Curbs, asphalt should meet, and driveway specifications should meet town code. That'll be in the memo that Rose sends you. It's unclear if any light fixtures are being relocated or installed as part of this project. A lighting spill plan should be provided. Public improvements, if necessary, performance bond and engineering fee will need to be provided, along with the stormwater maintenance agreement. And then turning vehicle movement plans, graphic representations, standard kind of comments that I'm sure this, the applicant and the applicant's engineer will be able to address at the next meeting.
Thank you, Rich. I'm looking through Pat's comments. I believe most of Pat's comments have been covered between Mike's and Rich's. We can, you can also get a copy of those from, from Rose.
Okay.
I think they're all pretty much covered. Prior to me turning it over to the planning board, I think most of them have been out there looking at it. Can you give us an overview of the entire project? Might explain to us.
Sure, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Aiello. I'm a principal with the firm of JMC. Here tonight on behalf of Putnam Plaza LLC, who is a subsidiary of Regency Shopping Centers. You may recall that Erstad Biddle Properties used to own the center, but Erstad Biddle Properties and Regency merged, and Regency is the surviving entity. So Regency Shopping Centers is the new owner of the shopping center. So that the, the proposed improvements in the northern parking lot and in front of the current Harbor Freight are really intended to take what is currently a somewhat unstructured parking lot with a wide open expansive pavement and provide some additional structure to the traffic flow within that portion of the parking lot. So what we're doing is we are proposing parking spaces along the side of the current Harbor Freight. Right now, the drive aisle and the pavement just kind of goes right up to it. There's a lane that you could drive through from the corner of Harbor Freight directly to the northern driveway onto, onto Old Route 6. And what we're doing is making that parking area a little bit more of a conventional type layout with parking closer to the building, 24-foot aisles, and modifying the direction in which you would, no, not the direction, but the general alignment of the parking on the north. The overall, and in addition to what we're doing on the north, there are parking spaces immediately opposite the front door to Harbor Freight that are currently 90-degree parking, but the drive aisle behind it is narrow. I believe it's about 21 feet, which is substandard for a standard 90-degree parking. So what we're doing there is we're proposing to put that parking on an angle to make it easier to get in and out of those parking spaces where the aisle is narrow. So those changes with the angled parking spaces, you know, modify that area. And then what we've done is we've restriped that entire western parking bay between Route 6 and the building. So overall, the, the overall improvements end up resulting in one additional parking space than what is currently there. There is a variance that exists on the property from when the shopping center and the grocery store was built, and I believe it was 2005, which provided a parking variance, so we're not lowering our total number of parking spaces. We're adding one additional space. So that, that's an overview of, you know, what we're proposing and why it's being done. It's really just to take an area that's wide open and, and not really structured in the north and providing a more typical parking lot layout in that area.
The owner still needs to provide some handicap or ADA accessible parking along that strip though. There, if that's the only one, and then the other ones over by Hannaford or whatever tops, that's not enough for the middle. They have to do something to add a few more.
Sure.
If the map is correct and they're not showing any, I mean, that's, that's what I was referring to. They shouldn't be opposite sides and nothing in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly take a look at that and see if any adjustments need to be made.
Questions from the board?
Yeah. Could you point to, on the diagram and just explain the traffic flow? If I'm coming in to, from Old Route 6, I'm there, where would I drive to, to park? And if I'm going to park in front of Harbor Freight, how those angles would work with the traffic flow? I'm just trying to find out where one way is.
Sure, sure. So if you're coming in from Old Route 6, there would be a drive aisle here, so it'd be striping on either side with parking, and there'd be a drive aisle right here, which would bring you to the front, just like it currently does. In existing conditions, this is a one-way traffic flow going in a northerly direction. So in order to get to Harbor Freight, where any of these uses here, you could park over in this northern area, or you could continue, like you currently do, coming around and then coming back up, and then you can park in any of these parking spaces along the front. So from this point to this point, or we're, we're changing the current 90-degree parking to the angled parking because this aisle is narrow, and we're proposing a 21-foot aisle.
And the angle, of course, would bias to the right.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So to follow up on Bob's point, then, in front of Harbor Freight, it's one way, correct?
In existing conditions and proposed.
And it's going to continue that way?
Correct.
And is there, we might as well look at, is there ample signage there for those people coming in not to make a left into the one-way traffic?
Are we, we are showing do not enter signs here.
Yeah.
So when you come in, there'll be a do not enter sign, and we're also proposing one-way signs there.
I mean, it works now, but I was just curious.
Right, right. No, we will sign it to be obvious.
So one other question. I used to frequent that parking lot before Harbor Freight was a gym.
Right.
And, you know, I'll confess, I'm a prime offender, but I'd come in on, off of Route 6, and I just, I would not go on that drive next to the building that you're describing. I would just cut right through that parking lot on the left-hand side there and find whatever, whatever was convenient. So how's the flow going to prevent someone like me from doing that?
Well, we purposely, so when you're coming in, there will be striping here that will direct you into either going in this direction to go along the building, or there will be striping here, which will identify another aisle here where you would make a right to go and park in any of these spaces.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question. So when it was the gym, that, that walkway there in front was the same, you know, width that it was, that is now. So why now the angled parking and it wasn't ever done before if Regency had that place this whole time?
It's just a matter of as we were looking at the overall changes to the center here, we noticed that this was substandard, and we suggested to Regency that they make that angled parking because it was already one-way flow, and this just makes it easier to get in and out of these spaces. So it was really just an observation we made as we were looking at the overall plan.
And if you were to make them accessible, would those be the ones, the angled ones?
Well, there are accessible spaces proposed here, and in existing conditions, there are accessible spaces shown along here in this area. So yes, we are proposing some handicap spaces here, but based on the comments from the building department and the building inspector, we might move them and redistribute them elsewhere on the site.
Do they expect that much traffic and business there? Because I'm there frequently and no one's ever parked over there.
Well, it, it ended up being a discussion during the lease, and it's an obligation under the lease for Regency to do this.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Is there, is there extra parking or just enough parking for this application the way it sits right now?
Right now, we are one parking space above the number of spaces that was granted a variance in 2005. I believe it's 700 and?
34.
34 spaces.
Would that still apply since it's changed use now?
Yeah, it's a, it's a design shopping center. Their calculation is one, five parking spots per thousand.
Okay.
It's a little different than doing just a, a shoe store and a movie theater and whatever. They break it down so you don't have to change it every time a use changes.
Thanks. Reason I asked the question, thanks, is kind of what, what Bob was saying. We could probably limit that, but if we can't give up the parking spaces, put more planter boxes in there. When I see a big parking lot, I like to see trees.
Right.
And that's one problem we have in the area. When we do our parking, we're so cramming spaces in that, I mean, if you go out of state and you look at a lot of other areas and parking lots, parking lots are very nice, especially in summertime. There's a lot of shade because of trees. And if you could do some plantings to direct that traffic without sacrificing your parking spots, that's something I'd like to consider. And also the planters that are there now, are they going to be enhanced or cleaned up or?
So let me take that question in two parts. So this, although it's smaller, it shows the overall center, is the existing conditions plan. And you can see in this northern lot, there currently are no trees in that existing parking lot. So our proposed plan includes the addition of more landscape islands, and we also have a landscaping plan where we are proposing trees within that area. So we are reducing impervious area by about 4,000 square feet in the proposed conditions. So we have implemented that element. There are some existing planted areas here that will be removed, but we're replacing them. We're just moving it over to be more in line with the proposed aisle. But we are adding additional trees in these locations here in addition to replacing what we're displacing right here. And we are reducing impervious area.
Right, thank you.
Good point. What about truck flow? The trucks off of Route 6 have nice easy access to the back of the stores. They don't impede into the front at all. Will that change at all?
Well, when you're talking about large delivery trucks?
Yes.
We, we did review that with the, with Regency today and the person that's in charge of the center. The truck route is from this southernmost driveway, and it brings all the trucks in a counterclockwise direction.
And they exit onto Roots?
And then they exit onto Old Route 6, correct. So what we're proposing will not change that.
Good.
But we did look at, and we did this today, and we can provide, you know, truck turning maneuvers. We did look at SU 30, single body 30-foot trucks and single body 40-foot trucks, just in case you have like FedEx trucks or smaller trucks coming into the front that want to go to the front area. And this alignment is able to accommodate those trucks too. In fact, when you, when you go to the center, there used to be a one-way or no entry sign here. It's not there now, but when you get to this point, there is a do not enter sign. So it is intended to be a counterclockwise flow for large delivery trucks, and the Harbor Freight loading dock is oriented in that fashion. So you would come in, pull past it, and then back in, and then leave out to Old Route 6.
What about lighting? I know Rich mentioned it, I think Mike mentioned it. Did you say you were going to upgrade or change or do anything with lighting?
The current site plan doesn't have any changes to the lighting in, in the north, in the north parking. Right now, when you go, there's perimeter parking that kind of, I'm sorry, perimeter lighting that shines inward from the perimeter of the site.
Any other questions from anybody?
I, I believe you need a review with the team. Rich alone had several pages of comments. I think if you do another iteration, we can get you pretty close to, to making some decisions on this. But I like to see a lot of the comments by Rich and Mike, and Pat has some. You can get a copy of those from Rose.
Okay.
Addressed and maybe see you back in two weeks.
Okay, sure, we can do that. And at that point, we could talk about whether or not we're ready for a public hearing. Would that be the?
Yeah, if, if.
The thought process.
I like, I like Anthony's suggestion about the landscape.
You have your landscape plan?
If you could develop that a little bit more, I think that'd be helpful. What kind of?
Yeah.
Plant should plant and how many, where they're at.
We, we actually do have a landscaping plan. I believe it's C 150 in our site. So there, there's one.
Okay.
Anything else?
I just had a question. We don't have issues with flooding in that area, do we?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't have issues with it, but I'm not.
Yeah, no, I mean, just not.
St. Michael's Brook runs along the back of it, I believe.
Yeah, so there is a flood zone there, there, you know, so St. Michael's Brook is, Brook is back there. There's a wetland area back there. There's a lot going on in that little corridor behind it. I don't, I'm not aware of any flooding that goes on. I can't say that it's never happened, right? But on the grand scheme of things, no.
If they were building a building, they'd have to go three feet above base flood elevation. It's not a building, so we, we don't tell them.
All right, this is all existing. They're not really doing anything to impact that.
Understood.
It was like Mike said, something new, be a whole different story.
Thank you. Nice improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you back here soon.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, A and B Holdings, 93 Teakettle Sprout Road for a bond return.
Evening.
Hello.
Mike, I don't believe you had?
I have nothing on this, no.
Pat didn't have any comments. Rich?
So the applicant has requested a bond return for the project. The bond, the board should note the original bond for the project is $26,000, just now been reduced. We made a site visit and multiple site visits on the site, but the most recent one on February 27th to evaluate the status. Based on the inspection of site features as identified in the performance bond have been installed and are completed, and the bond can be returned. The only exception is that their site needs to be stabilized, grassed and seeded. This can be completed prior to having a CO issued, so that would be up to the building inspector. So with that, the bond can be returned.
I'll put that condition on the permit so we know to make sure it's all in.
Okay. So the next step would be a, a public hearing?
Correct.
And we would need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the bond return.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That should be on the agenda in, in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Rose will let you know. It's either two weeks or it'll be the meeting after that, but it.
Depends on the timing. It involves newspapers and publishing, so it's either going to be two weeks or four weeks. We meet every two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could you just identify yourself and who you are?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. My name is Maria Consolo. I, I'm here to represent Michael Skoka and A&amp;B Holdings.
Thank you.
Do you have permission to represent him?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Joe, thank you. Next on the agenda is Santa Gelo, 22 Canard Road, regrading application. Thank you. Mike, any comments on the regrading?
I do not.
Rich?
So the comments, we had a bunch of comments last time. The applicant did address them, and so we're here now. I think the, the work has already been done. They just need to move forward with it. They've addressed all the comments that I had.
And Pat had no comments.
No, Pat did not.
Can you explain what exactly you're doing with the regrading?
Sure. Good evening, members of the board.
You mentioned your name also.
Yes, my name is Greg Ketchepoli, engineer on the project for 22 Canard Road. The project is rebuilding an existing retaining wall that runs parallel to Canard Road, as well as regrading behind the wall and in front of the wall to meet a four-foot maximum height. And then there's also just a small extension to the wall on this end. Nothing is going to exceed four feet tall. And that's, that's the project, is to rebuild an existing retaining wall and regrade and...
Will you be bringing in any fill?
Yes, there is fill being proposed. There's a net of about 680 yards. We are requiring that the, the contractor holds a manifest and that the fill is clean, and we will be providing, you know, information on that end.
We were just about to ask you those questions.
Right.
Any thoughts from the board here?
With the wall regrading, we just want to make sure it's clean.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything, right, anything else? Otherwise, schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second. One in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
We'll see you back here in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great. Have a good night.
Thank you. You also. Next on the agenda, Robert Slate, 54 Fair Street, Carmel, also for regrading. Mike, I believe you had some comments on this.
Yeah, the applicant graded off a pad at the rear of his property in preparation for building a garage. It was determined to be over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, so he was required to obtain regrading permit from the planning board. Only soil and rocks were removed from the property, none was added, so testing should not be required. That's all I have.
Thank you. Rich?
To concur with Mike, no soil was brought in. It was submitted at about 10,000 square, it was a 10,900-square-foot disturbance. Obviously requires a, a plan that with soil erosion control only. There were only some minor comments. They should provide a ser, a separate survey as part of the site, oh, in lieu of the site plan or separate from the site plan, I apologize. If any fill is brought in, must be certified per New York State regulations. There should be an assessment of runoff from the site so as not to cause erosion. Location, natural water courses, so they kind of showed the wetlands. There's a wetlands off to the left, and any locations of wells, but I don't believe there will be any because they are in the water and sewer district over there, so there should be no wells. But just, they just need to identify that. It's relatively straightforward. This was developed by Jack, so he submitted a SWIP. It's under review. Otherwise, it should be relatively straightforward. It's a relatively flat piece of property. It's actually controlled. They have prior to the wetlands to the left, when you're looking at the property, kind of the way it drives in right now, there's a wall there, so any, even if it rained about out of hell tonight, it would be captured by that wall and not enter into the wetlands. But still, it was a disturbance next to a wetlands. I don't believe they need to go to the ECB on this, but, you know, because of that wall.
Thank you, Rich. Can you explain the project to us?
Sure. My name is Lee Schultz, and I'm representing for Bob Slate.
I tried to get out there, and there was a lot. I drove by there, there was people behind me that was flooding, right in the middle of that Fair Street there. It just was, I, I just kept going. I, I couldn't turn off. It was like, it's a...
It's crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just crazy.
Now, this is Bob's residence. He lives there with his family.
And Fair Street is where?
Right here.
Okay.
And this is, and this is the Carmel High School property hall area.
Okay.
And this is an existing old 1800 garage.
Yeah, Mike's right. Can you use a microphone? It's not as much for us as it is for the people listening on TV.
All right, so that's Bob's residence. This is a garage storage building. He has an old building that's been there for a long time. This is his pool area, and this is the area here where he wants to put the garage, a new garage. It's a, just a personal garage for private stuff, for car collections.
One car or two car?
Uh, well, he's hope, he's got about six cars he'll, he'll probably put in there.
Six-car garage, or how many?
Well, it's not a car. It's a, it's, he's got classic cars. They're not everyday drivers or anything. So it's, it's just, it's 40 by 60. Whether he has them all there at one time, or he's working on one or two, I don't know. So this is an existing stone wall here, and an existing stone wall here that's already there, and that's about it. I think he's putting one garage door in the front, I, I think, 14...
How does he get into that? I mean, where's he?
This is his driveway.
Okay.
He drives in like this, in, and he'd drive right into that, right into the front.
So I have a question for Rich. So I have a question for Rich and Mike. So this is a regrading application, not to be confused with a garage application.
That's correct.
That'll come, that will yet to be...
What he was doing is, he was trying to see if he was going to be able to put a garage. So he wanted to see if it was a rock back there, what he had, because if you had a huge rock and you had to blast, there was no, the houses are just too close if you had to blast. So he was concerned about that, so he started doing a little, and it became more. We got a call, went out there and spoke to him, and that's when this whole thing came up. He asked me about the garage about five, six months ago, and said he was going to talk about it in the spring, so he was out there seeing what he could do, and he just got a little carried away.
All right, so for us here tonight, we just need to focus on the regrading. And if and when the garage materializes, we'll look at that in the future.
Right, okay. So there's just minor comments on the regrading. Jack can address them. He has in the past, you know, so we'll get, Lee will get the comments to Jack, and whomever Rose will get them out, and he'll be able to address them. He'll just come back at the next meeting. You should be able, be able to, be able to move forward with this, with the next step, so.
I'd be curious, are there were any trees removed in the regrading?
Oh, I know, I know there was a, one tree right here in the middle that was removed. I couldn't tell you how big it was or anything. I didn't do it or anything, so, but I know, I know there was a tree there. It was, it was actually a really big bush-type tree, you know, wasn't, wasn't a big oak tree or nothing stood up there. It was more like a pine tree type thing. And, and some smaller, and smaller trees, too, were on evergreens that were over here and over here.
Okay. Since we're not talking about the garage, I won't ask about replanting.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board on the regrading?
This elevation is about 10 feet deeper than here. So, so this, from here over is about 10 feet higher.
That's the higher ground.
Yeah, so the garage will, would be down, will look like it's down in a hole. It's not in a hole, but it'll look like it is.
Did the work require putting in a retaining wall?
Just a slope. This'll be a rock slope here, a one-to-one slope on it.
And when the regrading is done, will it be gravel?
Yeah, probably a gravel parking lot.
What's the distance from Fair Street to the back of the property? I'm just curious.
Uh, I don't know, to be honest. Should be on my drawing.
One of the sides it'll say.
Mike's guessing around 300 feet. That's, I'm just curious.
I would guess right in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, we need to schedule a public hearing. Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to put this on for a public hearing.
One in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Rose will schedule a public hearing. It should be in the next meeting or two. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting of March 13.
Second. One in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.